For today. Let's jump into it. Let's see how numbers work, shall we? Remember, if you're in this live session right now, if you're hearing the sound of my voice, whether live or on the replay, make sure that y'all hit the like button for me. Hit the thumbs up button for me. It's free. I promise you it's free. Hit the li- hit the like button and make sure that you share with a friend at some point. Alright? So let's see how numbers work. How numbers work? Before we jump into that, let's do a little. Let's do a little warm up. Let's do a little warm up with numbers. Um. What should we do multiplication or division? Let's do multiplication. Boom. So on your side of the screen, right? Y'all should be able to see some multiplication questions. So what we're gonna do is we are going to dive into some questions, kinda get a little warm up going before we actually dive into like the real math or the lesson of the day. It's good to throw a little numbers at your brain so that way you can kinda visualize like you gotta kinda warm up into it. With math, you can't really dive into it sometimes. You gotta kinda wake your brain up, right? So twelve times one, anything times one is itself. So we know that that is twelve. Eleven times nine, the best way to do any type of uh equations that is multiplying by eleven, you just take the number, you double it. At least that pertains to one through nine. So ninety-nine, five times one, anything times one is itself. So we doing five. I was telling y'all last time, right? So with the ASVAB, specifically the math portions, right? It's good to associate numbers. So not, so something like three times eight, okay? Your brain should already be thinking along the lines of, you know, twenty-four, right? Um, it's gonna help you because the ASVAB is actually timed, right? So if you take the pi cat, the pi cat is not timed. The pi cat is what you take in the army recruiting office, right? That one's not timed. But the ASVAB that you take at Meps, my friend, you are gonna be wasting a lot of time. If you see something like this, you know, seven times seven and you are, you know, seven plus seven plus seven plus seven plus seven plus seven. It's gonna, it's gonna, if you do that for every problem, you're gonna be out there hurting, okay? So this is why I like to inclu- include this as well, right? Seven times seven, forty-nine, okay? Begin to associate numbers instead of doing drawn out addition, you know, in order to do multiplication type questions, it's good to know the numbers for multiplication itself. So. Nine times twelve, what y'all got? Nine times twelve, what y'all got? This is actually a good question. What is nine times twelve in the first place? Wanna wait? Yes, indeed. Three times six, eighteen, eleven times five, fifty-five. Three times six again, what is it y'all? Is it twelve? Right, twelve? Negative, add six more to that. Eighteen. Why this is giving me the same numbers? Alright, here's a good one. Twelve times eight. Twelve times eight. Y'all go ahead and let me know. What is twelve times eight? Type it in the chat for me. Twelve times eight. Is that right? Y'all, twelve times eight, twenty? Somebody out there, I felt it. Some, someone of y'all was like, yeah, twenty. Ninety-six. Boom. Yes, indeed. Six times nine. What y'all got? Six times nine. Come on, we should be getting quicker by this cuz every live session I start with some multiplication type warmups, right? So y'all should be able to know by now, what is six times nine? That's a hint. Six times nine, five, fifty-something, yeah. Let's see, fifty-four, boom. Eight plus eight. Or eight times two, what y'all got? Boom, that's what I'm talking about. I see y'all in the comment section now. Y'all with me, y'all with me. That's what I'm talking about. We should be getting quicker with this, right? We should be getting quicker. Nine times six, what y'all got? I got fifty-four. What y'all got? Fifty-four? Three times twelve, ooh, this is a good one. Three times twelve, who's rocking with me out there? Who is rocking with me? Three times twelve, I got thirty-six. Y'all want to speed this up a little bit? Ten times six, I got sixty. See if y'all can keep up now. Alright, eight times nine. Y'all tapping too slow in the, in the comment section for me, man. Y'all tapping too slow. Eight times nine, I got seventy-two, boom. Ten times two? I got twenty. Seven times eleven, what y'all got? I got seventy-seven myself. Personally, because anything times eleven is itself, right? So seven, seven, it's itself double, right? So two sevens, boom. Man, we batting at a hundred percent, man. I see y'all. I see y'all rocking with me in the comment section, man. Alright, we at a hundred percent. I got eight. Alright, now we're about to do a speed round, alright? Ten or twenty questions, really like sped up really quickly, okay? Twelve times six, let me wait to see what y'all put. Twelve times six, cuz I noticed y'all don't be answering for the twelve times tables. Y'all don't be answering. I think y'all afraid of uh twelve, the twelve times tables, man. Twelve times six. I hope y'all aren't out there using your uh calculator either, cheating. Twelve times six, alright. Let's get it. I got forty-eight, oh shoot, seventy-two. I should have read the question closer. Man, y'all didn't guide me on that one. Boom, I got fifteen on this one. Oh, this is a good one. I got one twenty-one. I got nine. Ten times six, I got sixty. Eight times nine, I got seventy-two. Seven times twelve, ooh, another good one. Eighty-four? Am I right, y'all? I'm afraid to hit this enter button, man. I seen the red pop up on the screen. I got one wrong. Yikes. Man, my confidence is shaking now. Three times ten, thirty. Let me do a little maybe like five more. Fifty-five, right? Four times eight, I got thirty-two, boom. Three times nine? I got twenty-seven, boom. Two times twelve, I got twenty-four, bam. Three times eight? I got twenty-four again, bam. I got fifteen on this one. Three times five, fifteen. Eleven times eight, eighty-eight. Ten times four, forty. Boom. Fantastic work, fantastic. Man, we would have been at a hundred percent had it not been for me or whatever question it asked, right? Silly me, that's what I get for rushing. Uh, it is what it is, right? It is what it is. But you know what? I think that we are warmed up for today's study session. So let's go ahead and start getting into it, alright? So math knowledge, math knowledge, math knowledge. This is going to be the this is going to be the lesson for today, math knowledge. Question number one. If. I mean, I'm gonna have to re- rewrite this. Honestly. I think on the ASVAB, a question like this would be written like two X to the exponent of two, alright? So whenever you see that little upward arrow, so to speak, all it's telling you is that's actually an exponent. So to the exponent of two, just like how I wrote it down here, okay? Equals fifty. Alright, what could be the value of X? Ooh, what a great first question, man. What a great first question. So I'm gonna give y'all eh, maybe thirty seconds to a minute to try to get a head start. Um, the reason why I recommend y'all bringing a calculator to this session is it's be, it's good to have a calculator close by you. You won't be able to use it on the actual ASVAB itself. So I am not trying to lead y'all astray. However, it's going to be good for you to have it in today's study session. So that way you can kinda keep yourself in the loop, right? You can have it at arm's reach away um to kinda fact check your own work. Alright, so. I want to rema- remind y'all of a term called PEMDAS. Do y'all remember that? They taught us in school, it was like parentheses, exponents, you know, you know, all of this fun stuff, right? Um, in any type of algebraic expression like this, the goal is to get X by itself, right? So right now, we have two X to the exponent of two equals fifty, right? So what we're going to have to do is divorce this two from this X, right? So we're gonna divide by two cuz right now the two X is a representation of the two is being multiplied by X, right? So we're gonna do the opposite of multiplication and we're gonna divide by two on both sides. I think y'all should be tracking what I'm saying, right? Divided by two on both sides, leaving us on this side with X squared equals whatever fifty divided by two is, okay? So fifty divided by two, most of us can do this in our head, I'm sure. Fifty, what's half of fifty? Twenty-five. Okay, so we have X squared equals twenty-five, okay? Now, here's where it gets interesting. Because we have a exponent of two here, we have to figure out what is the opposite? What is the opposite function as having an exponent, right? For those of you who do not remember, in order to get this X by itself, you are going to have to, let me see if I can write this. Do y'all remember what that is right here? You're gonna have to find the square root of twenty-five, okay? The square root of twenty-five. So what is a square root? This is actually a little bit more tricky to explain than arithmetic reasoning, right? Because I have to use technical math terms, right? So all it's saying is what, what number times what number equals twenty-five? What times itself equals twenty-five, AKA one times one, two times two, three times three? You know, what times itself equals twenty-five, right? So on this side, we'll have X by itself. And then we're gonna try to figure out what times what equals twenty-five. Alright, in this case, we know since we did it earlier today, that five times five equals twenty-five. Alright, five times five equals twenty-five. We're gonna go to our answer key. We see that A, we have negative five, B, we have positive five, C, we have ten, and D, we have both choice A and choice B. Alright, so from this answer key, if you circle B, you wouldn't be wrong. You'd actually be right, right? Because X equals five. Five times five equals twenty-five. However, for those of you who also remember that in math, a negative times a negative, so let me see if I can write it over here. Negative five uh, times negative five also equals positive twenty-five. Let me see if I'm still writing cuz last time this thing shut off in my face. Does that make sense? A negative times a negative is also a positive, alright? So if you circle B, you would be wrong in this instance, okay? If you circle only A, you would also be wrong. The correct answer would be D. Because positive five times five is twenty-five and negative five times negative five is also twenty-five. So the choice is both A and B, kind of a little trick question. You can definitely expect to see something like this on the ASVAB. So those who said that they were taking the ASVAB on uh Thursday, by all means, make sure that you take a mental bookmark of this, alright? Because you, you know, it could be a little tricky. You could just be like, oh, positive five, and you know, select your answer. But then there goes points because you were too hasty, alright? Alright, we are going to move on to the next question. Remember, math knowledge is trying to see how much do you understand? How much do you understand how numbers work, okay? Negative and a negative is positive. Matter of fact, let me go back to this question. I really wanna reemphasize the fact that a negative and a negative is a positive, right? I'll, let me see if I can write it. If you have something that says something like uh negative three times two, okay, I'm just gonna use simple numbers, negative three times two, okay? Well, look at the sign. A negative times a positive is a negative. Anytime the signs don't match up, it's going to be a negative. So three times two, we know is six. And then a negative times a positive, we know is a negative because they're opposite function, they're opposite uh, yeah, functions or signs, right? So when you have a positive and you have a negative, it's a negative. If you had negative three times negative two, again, three times two, we know is six. And now we'll look at the signs, okay? What I mean by signs, you're looking at this right here. What you're trying to see is are they both the same or are they different? So because they're the same, your answer will just be positive six, alright? If you had um, positive three times negative two, wh- what would this answer be, man? What would this answer be? Y'all go ahead and comment in the comment section below, okay? Cuz I want everybody to be on the same page as it pertains to this. In the math knowledge section, your whole answer could be wrong just because you said the answer was positive something instead of negative something, right? So we know that the number itself will be six, right? However, look at the signs. We have a positive three and then we have a negative two, okay? Because they're not the same, it's gonna be negative. Whenever you have a positive and a negative, you're going, your answer is going to be negative, okay? And then lastly, let me see, we all know that positive three times positive, ooh, come here, positive two equals positive six. Why? Because both the signs are positive. We are multiplying positive numbers, two positive numbers. Okay, I really hope this is making sense, okay? Because these are the things, the little tiny things that's gonna get you on the ASVAB. Alright, so before I move on, do y'all have any questions as it pertains to this whatsoever? Any questions at all? Alright, so I got you. I see that. Alright, so I won't move on just yet, okay? Because we still have a little bit of confusion. And I appreciate you commenting this because I promise you, you're not the only one, alright? You're not the only one. So understanding negatives and positives, negatives and positive. How do you know if your answer is going to be negative or positive, okay? That is the question. So. We have positive eight, okay? We're going to multiply positive eight by another positive eight. Okay, what I mean is look to see what these signs are, okay? Are you multiplying by a positive number or are you multiplying by a negative number? In this case, we have both positives. So if you have both positive numbers, right? Your answer will always be positive. Okay, if you had both negative numbers. And if you're watching this on a live replay, you can always skip past, alright? You can always skip past and go to the next question. But in the live stream, we're gonna make sure that everybody understands to the best of our abilities, alright? So if you have both negative numbers, for example, negative eight times negative eight, your answer is still going to be a positive number. Why? Because both the signs, both of these signs are negative. Okay? And then if you have, how to know if the answer is negative? Oops. The signs don't match. If the signs don't match, you will have a negative number. For example, a positive eight times a negative eight is going to give you a negative number. And it didn't matter if it was the opposite way around. A negative eight times a positive eight, you are still going to get a negative number. Ooh. You are still going to get a negative number. Okay, because the signs here are different. That's about the best way that I can explain it, alright? It's one of those understanding math type things, alright? So I just wanted to make sure that I spent a little bit more time to make sure that everybody kinda understands how positive numbers work, how positive answers work and how negative answers work, alright? Boom. Alright, so let's go ahead and see what this next question says. Great questions, by the way. Alright, so here we go. Another math knowledge type question. So math knowledge is really interesting cuz you never know what type of question you're gonna get. Round twenty-seven point five three four to the nearest whole number. What y'all got for an answer? A, B, C, or D? Twenty-seven point five? Twenty-seven point five-three? Twenty-seven or twenty-eight? We are rounding to the nearest whole number. What y'all got? What y'all got? What do y'all got? What do y'all got? So, my man, uh, is it the same for adding and subtracting? So the signs for adding and sub- subtracting, no, it's not the same. If you had negative ten and you had a positive five, it won't be the same, alright? Don't think of it for adding and subtracting. For example, that's like, if I owed you ten dollars and then I gave you five, I would still owe you five dollars, right? So it's not quite the same for adding and subtracting, but I'll make that in a separate video, alright? Alright, here we go. I see y'all's answers, alright? So is the answer A, B, C, or D, right? Remember, we are rounding to the nearest whole number. So a whole number, if we're, if we know that we're rounding to the nearest whole number, we already know that A and B is out of here. Sorry, if you chose A and B, you won't be correct in this scenario. Now, it's just a matter of trying to find out, is it twenty-seven or is it twenty-eight? Well, the rule of thumb is that if you have a number, twenty-seven point five three, four, okay? This is to the nearest tenth. This is to the nearest hundredth and this is to the nearest thousand, right? However, we are going to look at this number right here to know whether or not we are going to round down or we are gonna round up. So the rule of thumb is that if you are, if this number that I circled is five or higher, you are going to round up, right? To twenty-eight, right? So we know that twenty-seven is not the right answer. Twenty-eight is the right answer. So if you, if you answered D, you are absolutely correct. Now, when would you round down? If you had a number that was twenty-seven point three two one, we will look at that same number right here. And if it's four or lower, right? We are going to round down to the nearest whole number of twenty-seven. Bam, I think everybody is tracking this one, so I'm not really gonna get into this one too much. But y'all look like you're tracking cuz y'all are some geniuses watching this video, alright? So I'm gonna go ahead and we're gonna move on to the next question. Great job to everybody who answered correctly on that. Boom, here we go again. Numbers, no explanation, just numbers. So we are expected to solve. I know it's written up there, but let me rewrite it my way. Four times three in parentheses. Do y'all remember who Aunt Sally is? Please excuse my dear aunt Sally. Y'all remember Aunt Sally? Four times three in parentheses, times three minus six times, uh, times, what is this? Nine divided by three. Let me see what y'all get for an answer. Why did I write this thing called PEMDAS up top here? PEMDAS. Does anybody know what PEMDAS represents or stands for? PEMDAS. PEMDAS is the order that we are going to solve anything that's algebraic in, okay? So what do I mean by that? So P stands for parentheses, okay? E stands for exponents. M stands for multiplication, D for division, A for addition, S for subtraction, alright? So knowing this, this is something that I would highly recommend. If you don't know this, you need to know this before you take the ASVAB. Alright, because a lot of math knowledge actually hinge it, hinges on this term that's PEMDAS, alright? If you didn't know really much else about math knowledge, just knowing PEMDAS might get you through about fifty percent of the question, okay? Because to some degree is going, these are the type of questions that it's gonna be asking. Alright, so P, we're gonna look to see parentheses and we're gonna solve what's in the parentheses first, alright? So looking here, we see four times three. Four times three, so let's solve that. Twelve in parentheses. And then over here, actually, let me write out the rest. So times three minus six times this parentheses over here. Nine divided by three is three. Boom, alright? So now we continue looking, alright? I just kept it in parentheses just so that way we can kinda visualize. However, at this point, it's not to say like an operation is happening within the parentheses, so you really could erase the parentheses, alright? So we have this. Twelve times three minus six times three, right? So parentheses, we're good to go. Exponents, do we have any? No, we don't. Multiplication, do we have any multiplication? Yes, we do. So twelve times three, what is twelve times three, y'all? Thirty-six. And then we have the subtraction and then we have another uh, multiplication over here. Six times three, y'all. What is six times three? Six times three, do y'all remember? Eighteen. Thirty-six minus eighteen. Now, we've done our multiplication. Now, we've done our multiplication. There is no division. We have no addition. And now we're left with subtraction. Thirty-six minus eighteen. Boom! Six, we can't subtract six from eight, so we cross that out. We borrow one, right? So we have two on that side. And then this six, now that we added ten, becomes sixteen. Sixteen minus eight, we know is eight. And then two minus one, we know is one. Eighteen. Alright, we go to our answer key, A, B, C, and D. We see that C, Boom, is eighteen. Right? We were able to get this because of PEMDAS. Please excuse my dear Aunt Sally. Parentheses, exponents, multiplication, division, addition, and subtraction. Alright? Alright, alright? Ha, top vulture, it's all gravy, it happens. Make sure that you guys pay attention to the signs, okay? Because some people try to solve this in their head, And just like you said, you didn't see the division sign, And then it ended up costing you the right answer. But imagine putting in all that work just to end up choosing the wrong answer at the end. So make sure that we take our time on the, on these ASVAB type questions. Alright, so, I'm gonna go ahead and clear this out. Let's jump into the next one, because we are on a dead-on roll. Alright, oh boy, fractions. Everybody shaking in their boots now that this fraction business is up. Fractions. Which one of these fractions is the largest? Two-thirds? Five-eighths? Eleven-sixteenths? Or three-quarters? Which one of these fractions? Which one of these fractions is the largest? Which one of these fractions is the largest? Where would you begin? Well, in order to know which fractions are the largest, let me just tell you guys right now. You wouldn't look at the, Biggest number. For example, you wouldn't look at, Oh, well, I see an eleven, so eleven has to be bigger than the rest, okay? There's a certain way though, you gotta solve this. Alright? And it starts with finding a common denominator. When you're comparing fractions, you want a common denominator, okay? You want a common denominator. What do I mean? Well, let's go ahead and write these out, side by side. Two over three, Five over eight, Eleven over sixteen, Three, Over four. Boom! So they're all written out side by side, okay? However, we don't know if we're to compare these first two numbers, Two-thirds and five-eighths, which one is actually bigger? If this was a pie chart, how would we actually know which is bigger between these two? We wouldn't be able to compare them. So what we would need to do, cuz we can't really compare a two-thirds of a something to a five-eighths of a something, right? We would need a common denominator. So, what number, As a denominator, for all of tho, for all you guys who does not understand fractions, Uh, how do I, how can I show this? So let's say you had one over two. This number, Would be the denominator. This number up top, Would be what's called the numerator. The numerator on top, denominator on the bottom. So when I'm speaking of denominator, I'm speaking of the number that's on the bottom of the fraction. Alright? So what number goes into three, eight, sixteen, and four evenly? Well, looking at this, I can tell, What I will do is I'll divide these fractions like this. This eight, sixteen, and four, I know, That sixteen, they all go into the number sixteen. So what I would do is, in order to make this eight a sixteen, I know that I have to multiply by two. And what you do to the bottom, you also have to do to the top, Multiply by two. Right? This sixteen, we'll just keep it as is because we're using sixteen as the denominator itself. And on this side, this four, I would have to times, The bottom by four in order to get sixteen, now I have to times the top by four also. Right? So, five times two, Is ten. And we're using sixteen, As the denominator. Right? This eleven over sixteen can just come right down. Okay, as is. And now on this side, three times four is twelve. And then the bottom is sixteen. So, now looking at these numbers, I can see that, okay, well, twelve over sixteen is bigger than eleven over sixteen, Which is bigger than ten over sixteen. They're all the same, Used in the same measurement, which is sixteen as the denominator. So I can see that twelve over sixteen is the biggest between these three. So I can X out this eleven over sixteen, we know that that's out of the picture. And this five-eighths, we know that that's out of the picture, okay? This twelve over sixteen or three-fourths is still in the competition. So now I have two-thirds, two over three, Or three over four. Which one is bigger? Let me draw a little line like this so that y'all don't get confused. Two-thirds or three-fourths, which is bigger? Well, let's see, what number goes into both of these? Twelve, right? We need twelve as the common denominator. So what do I need to do? I need to multiply this three times four. I need to do the same to the top. I need to multiply the four times three, I need to do the same to the top. Okay? Now I have two times four is eight, Over twelve. And then I have, What is it? Three times three is nine, Over twelve. Which one is bigger? Eight twelves or nine twelves? Nine twelves takes up more of the pie. So this number is bigger, I know that two-thirds, You're outta there, my friend. Three-fourths would be the correct answer. I hope I didn't lose anybody on how I solved that. Is everybody tracking? Do y'all have any questions? So just a quick recap on what I did in order to solve that. I put them all side by side, but I needed a common denominator. Had to have a common denominator. Without the common denominator, you would actually just be guessing, so to speak, okay? So that's why it's so important. When they all had the common denominator, which was sixteen, I can measure them. Twelve out of sixteen is bigger than the other two options that we had. And then I compared the three-fourths and the two-thirds needing a common denominator of twelve. And now that they are both in measurements of twelve, I know that nine is bigger than eight. So three-quarters is the correct answer. I'm gonna go ahead and clear this off the screen, and we can move on to the next question. Continue the pattern. Ah, this is always fun. A continue the pattern type question. We have five, ten, nine, fifteen, twenty, nineteen, twenty-five. What would be next in the pattern? Let me give you all a little thirty seconds to try to figure out the pattern, And then I'm gonna jump in after you guys, And we can see, Who's right and who is getting voted off of the island. Who is right and who is getting voted off of the island? Try to understand the pattern, try to understand the pattern. When you've gotten your answer, go ahead and comment what you got if you're brave enough. In the comment section, we are all learning together. I like that, I seen that comment in there, we are all learning together. That's what I'm talking about, that's motivational right there, because it's a fact. We are all learning together. Way to keep each other encouraged, way to keep each other motivated, alright? Y'all should've had enough time to crack this code by now, alright? So, what I do in order to try to solve these answers, right? I try to figure out what happened, what, how did I go from one, Number to the next? How do you go from one number to the next? What happened? What caused it to jump, right? So in order, this five jumping to a ten, right? What happened? Well, And these numbers be so close, so let me write it. Five over here, ten over here, Nine over here, Fifteen is next, Twenty is next, Nineteen, And twenty-five. Alright? So, Uh... This, starting with the five and going to the ten, right? What did we do? We added five. Right? Okay. And then we were at the ten. Now let's go from ten to nine, what did we do? We minus one. Alright? To go from ten to nine, alright, cool. From nine to fifteen, what do we do? Well, in order to go from nine to fifteen, You have to add six. Alright? From fifteen to twenty, what just happened there? Well, from fifteen to twenty, we added five. Right? Fair to say? Am I tripping or are y'all tracking? Alright, so from the twenty to the nineteen, what do we do? Aw, man, I think I'm seeing a little pattern here. We subtracted, ooh! Simba, what are you doing goofy? You over here talking, what are you doing? We did not subtract nine, y'all. To go from twenty to nineteen, We subtracted one, huh? Well, I see a little pattern forming up here. I see a plus five and I see a minus one. So let's see if we add six, Nineteen to twenty-five? We add six, look at that. So what we have now is what I like to call a little pattern going. We have this pattern here. Plus five minus one plus six. Plus five minus one plus six. Huh? So if the theory holds true, Then our next number, we should need to add five, right? So twenty-five plus five, let's continue that, let's put the, let's put the twenty-five down here. Right? So twenty-five? In order to get to this mysterious number, right? If we continue the pattern, we should need to plus five, so let's go to our answer key. Right? We know that C and D is automatically outta here because twenty-five plus five, If we're continuing the pattern, is not twenty-six. Does that make sense? So this is how we're ruling out answers. Alright? However, thirty, Is what we would put here, In this question mark space. Right? So we have twenty-five, We got thirty. Okay, then what do we have to do? Well, the next thing was minus one. Right? So thirty minus one would give us what number? Twenty-nine. Plus five minus one, so let's go to our answer key, oh snap! A, it looks like you're outta there. Because thirty-five is not the next order. But before we get to B, to actually circle the answer, Let's see if this is true, because we also need to, Plus six. So twenty-nine, Plus six is what? Thirty-five. Boom! Now we know that our work checks out, we can go over here, or we can circle B. Does that make sense? Because the pattern yet again is plus five, Minus one, Plus six. Does that make sense? Does it make sense how we got to B? Boom! Is everybody trackalacking? Awesome, awesome. So I think everybody's on the same page as it comes to this. Y'all wanna do a couple more questions cuz we here, we might as well, right? We are here, so let me go ahead and clear this off the screen. Let's move on. Oh, man, more fractions. So it looks like we have a multiplication, Question right here. Multiplying fractions, ooh, disgusting. One over four, Times, Two over three. One over four times two over three. What do y'all have, For an answer? How do we get through this? If y'all haven't already, make sure that you hit that subscribe button, okay? Make sure that you hit that subscribe button because, Y'all need to be a part of the family. You here for the, for the, Uh... ASVAB study sessions, so you might as well hit that subscribe button. Alright, so, Do you send practice tests so someone, Takes it at their own computer at home? So, I do, for the app, for the people that I work with, right? Uh, virtually, so it doesn't matter where you are in the country. I am also a recruiter that puts people in virtually. So I do, for the people that I'm working with, send them practice ASVABs also, Just like I'm coaching you, make sure that everybody develops, Uh, into being able to pass the ASVAB test. So there are people, yes, that I do send practice tests to. If you are interested in me becoming your recruiter, assuming that you're trying to join the army, Feel free to send me an email. Um, the process is pretty streamlined, And I'll send you basically a form to fill out, And um, we can get things cracking from there. So yes, I do send people practice tests as well, just to see where you're at. Alright, here we go, so, Multiplication is pretty easy, so what you do is you just multiply going across, right? So one times two is two, Four times three is twelve. Two twelves. We look in our answer key, we don't see two twelves in our answer key, why is that? Two twelves, we don't see two twelves in our answer key. Why, why, why? Because, Two twelves can be simplified, okay? Two can go into twelve, right? So, Two goes into two one time? Boom, that's what I'm talking about, two goes into two one time, and two goes into twelve, how many times? Six times. Alright, now we can go into our answer key and see what we got. C, one-sixth, One-sixth, One-sixth. Alright? I also wanna show you guys something while we are on this type of question. Okay? So we had one over four, Times, Two over three. What you can also do is something called, you can cross simplify. Meaning, I will look at this two, And I will look at this four down here. And I could see, huh, okay, well, two goes into both of these numbers, right? This is called cross simplifying right here, cross simplifying. So, two goes into both of these, so I know that maybe if I come down here, And I make this one over two, remember, cuz two goes into four, right? And then two goes into two one time, so that two up top actually becomes a one. remember cuz two goes into four right and then two goes into two one time so that two up top actually becomes a one over three now we can multiply going across one times one is one two times three is six so all we did is we cross multiple uh we cross simplified right two goes into four two times which is how we got this two on the bottom here two goes into two one time which is how we got this top now that everything is simplified we can multiply going across one-six either way regardless of how you do it one-six is still the answer alright so that's kinda understanding fractions understanding fractions alright let's go ahead and jump into the next question boom more fractions again let's get this out of the way more fractions again now that I've taught you guys that y'all should be able to solve this fairly quickly one-fifth times two-thirds one-fifth times two-thirds what y'all got what y'all got remember you're just multiplying going across multiplying going across make sure that y'all have hit the like button make sure that y'all hit the subscribe button one-fifth times two-thirds alright alright here we go multiplying going across right one times two is two five times three fifteen boom two over fifteen easy enough right y'all don't seem like you had any trouble with this two over fifteen great job great job telling you man y'all about to be dangerous man I don't know what branch of the uh the branch of the military y'all trying to join but y'all about to be dangerous on this ASVAB uh-oh I got one for y'all now three let me rewrite it three divided by three-fourths three divided by three-fourths ooh did I get y'all on this one three divided by three-fourths is it two and a quarter is it four is it three and three-quarters or is it five I'm still debating if I should go in the Marines the Marines don't let me get me started on the Marines man you see the hat that I'm wearing right now come on the Maru who don't get me started don't get don't 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 get me started on these other branch no I'm just messing with you the Marines is a great option okay I have nothing bad I do have many bad to say about every branch alright because it's each branch is very competitive right so the Marines has all kinds of bad things to say about the Army and so on and so forth but that's actually a great option like all jokes aside all competition aside uh Marines is actually a good choice I've met a lot of Marines very disciplined people um so if that's actually what you're thinking about then great however if you wanted to join the best branch I'll leave it there you know what I'm saying if you wanna join a best branch shoot me an email low-key alright here we go three divided by three fours how would we solve this okay well one it would make sense to make this three into a fraction alright so what we can do is take that three and say three over one alright three over one is the same thing as three alright anything over one is itself alright and then whenever you are dividing a fraction what you have to do is it's kinda weird I have never really understood why this is but it just is there's certain rules in math that you can't figure out you just have to accept it for what it is right so this division sign actually becomes a multiplication sign and then this fraction here actually will be it's called a reciprocal you have to multiply by the reciprocal basically what this is is just you have to flip the fraction upside down alright so whenever you divide by a fraction you always have to change the division into multiplication step one and then take the fraction and flip it upside down AKA multiply by the reciprocal now what you can do is multiply going across so here we have twelve over three let's look in our answer key do we have any twelve over three options of course we do not okay we have to take this fraction twelve over three if you wanna simplify it or if you wanna divide it out whatever you wanna do twelve divided by three we know that twelve divided by three is four that would be your correct answer we go back in our chart we see that B bam there it is four does that make sense I know it's kinda weird however it is what it is right you'd have to multiply by the reciprocal that is the rule of dividing by a fraction you don't ever technically divide by a fraction you just multiply it by the reciprocal or the number the fraction flipped upside down alright does that make sense alright remember I showed you guys two ways to multiply a fraction you can multiply going straight across and get twelve over three or what you can do is cross simplify as well so let's do that just for the heck of it we're gonna take these two numbers since they're across from each other one up one down three goes into three one times over on this side you'll have one over one and then there's nothing to cross simplify on that side so you would have four on top one on bottom okay one on bottom multiply going across four over one still equals four okay so you can cross simplify the three goes into this three one time so that's why you have one here and one there alright I think everybody understands this alright so somebody asked why don't we flip why didn't we flip the first number right so uh for now don't worry about this question alright this is Simba just freestyling a question so let's say we had a question that was like one-half divided by two-thirds alright one-half divided by two-thirds so this first fraction stays in place rule one don't do anything to this first fraction alright when you're dividing my fraction rule two is this sign becomes a multiplication sign so let me rewrite it on the bottom this stays in place rule two turn that into a multiplication sign rule three is to flip the second fraction upside down so in this case you'll have three over two and then you would multiply going across alright one times three is three two times two is four look at that Simba your answer would be three-fourths it's just one of those things that I wish I had like a fancy answer to give you I really don't it's just one of those things that you just do it just to do it but it makes sense in the language of math alright so to turn the division into a multiplication and flip the second fraction yes only flip the second fraction don't flip the first fraction at all don't do it don't be tempted to do it don't even look at it for too long only flip the second fraction y'all wanna la- another example of the same thing alright so let's say we have one-half divided by I don't know uh three-fourths let me see what y'all get for an answer as it pertains to this we might as well do some practical exercises again if you're just jumping into this video what I'm doing right now has nothing to do with this question that y'all are looking at up there this is just me freestyling okay to drive home the concept of dividing fractions how would we solve this how would we solve this not how would we solve this but in solving this what would be your answer alright since we are doing some live practical exercises step one the first fraction what do we do with it not a dag on thing that's what we do with it we let it be the first fraction leave it alone people leave it alone okay so we still have one-half rule two what do we do with this sign right here we take that sign and we are no longer dividing cuz you can't technically divide a fraction you just have to multiply it by the reciprocal so we change division into multiplication bam y'all are tracking I see y'all in the comment section now rule three what do we do what do we do with this fraction right here well we know that we have to flip it we multiply by the reciprocal so by flipping that three over four we'll actually get four over three now we can go into solving it one-half times four over three multiply going across or you can cross simplify if you wanna get fancy right one times four we know is four two times three is six if this was your answer right here you wouldn't be correct cuz you wouldn't be able to find this in the answer key unless it was a trick question sometimes they do that on the ASVAB they'll put four over six in the answer cuz you'll be so excited to see it you end up clicking it you would actually be wrong because two goes into both of these numbers we have to simplify so two goes into the top number and two goes into the bottom number your answer would actually be two-thirds alright if that's kinda confusing for you and you didn't wanna fall for this little trick right here this little trap setup then you can cross simplify like like I taught you guys right so we know that two goes into both two and four right so this will become a one and this will become a two okay so you'll have one over one times two over three multiply going across two over three two-thirds you can bypass that whole little setup little trap right there that deceitful little snake of a four over six alright alright so that's how you go about solving these type of questions alright I think y'all are tracking man I think we're actually doing pretty good with this so ooh we've been on here for a little while so I'm gonna go ahead and do one more question then we'll get into our cooldown math and call it a day always make sure that you simplify your answers right so when you always finish one of these you always gotta see if you can simplify more yes absolutely absolutely always see if you can simplify more in any question that you do okay because even if you get the question right for example this four over six right here is right technically however if you was to choose that as an answer you would be wrong okay because you would completely be overlooking this two out of three which is the simplified version of this four over six always make sure that you simplify alright I'm gonna go ahead and clear this off the screen boom and let's jump into our last question here we go ooh decimal type question so we're gonna solve this twenty-seven point six five times thirty-one point three twenty-seven point six five I guess I'll rewrite it this is another thing that low-key gets people decimals twenty-seven point six five and then what do we have thirty-one point three we are multiplying as our operation so let me give y'all a little head start on this maybe thirty seconds to a minute and let's see if y'all get the right answer A B C or D in the meantime I'm gonna go ahead and answer this question so when do when do you livestream so I can be on these every time you live great question so I did a livestream not too long ago maybe yesterday or the day before I don't really remember I'm really kinda sporadic so I really try to hit Saturdays because that's the days that people are typically off from school and off from work also but I definitely wanna come on here and start doing this a lot more so I don't know if I wanna get as deep as in you know every other day but if you guys are down to be on the live then hey I might as well come on here maybe every other day or something like that and we could do a quick session or a quick you know a quick live to help you guys out alright um it seems like y'all are gravitating towards this so we'll we'll see if we can do this a lot more twice a week three times a week that sounds good to me if it sounds good to you alright let's see if we can solve this question alright this is why I like to do brain warmups in the beginning alright brain warmups in the beginning so let's take this step by step three times five fifteen carry the one up here boom three times six eighteen plus one seventeen I'm sorry nineteen what the heck happened there nineteen carry the one three times seven twenty-one plus one twenty-two three times two six plus two eight don't worry about putting a decimal in there just yet okay whenever you're multiplying multiple digits like this you have to put a zero as a placeholder and then we go again if y'all see me make any little mistakes like I almost did on this nine go ahead and comment and it expose me just expose me alright comment in the comment section below so that way I'm not chasing the mistake later on alright so we put our placeholder zero and here we go one times five we know is five one times six is six one times seven is seven and one times two is two now that we put one placeholder zero the next thing we have to do now is put two placeholder zeros here alright and we're about to go again we know that basically it's gonna be the same as the top however let's do it three times five is fifteen we carried that one we're gonna reuse that same one right here three times six is eighteen plus one is nineteen right carry that one three times seven is twenty-one plus one is twenty-two so the two goes down the bottom here and that two goes up top here three times six I'm sorry three times two is six plus two is eight we got all these mumble jumbo numbers here and we need to add each line we are adding each line so five plus zero plus zero we got five nine plus five I almost multiplied these numbers nine plus five we have fourteen Nine plus five, I almost multiplied these numbers. Nine plus five, we have fourteen. Carry our one. One plus two is three. Plus six is nine. Plus five is fourteen. Carry our one. One plus eight is nine. Plus seven is sixteen. Plus nine again is twenty five, if I'm not mistaken. Remember, if y'all catch me making a mistake, just let me know. Two plus two is four. Plus one is five. And then eight plus another is eight. Alright, so now we have a big number here with no decimals. So how do we know where to put our decimals? We're gonna go back to the question itself, and let's see how many decimal places is taken up in this question. So this three is one decimal place from the, from the right. And this decimal here is two decimal places from the right, okay? That's a total of three decimal places. So now, what we would do is we would take this decimal and we would move it one, two, three decimal places to the left, giving us eighty, I'm sorry, eight hundred and fifty five point four four five. Okay, I hope that made sense right there. We look at the decimals, okay, and we count how many decimal places over. Another way I guess I can write it, just I like to do this from all, uh, explain the same thing in, in different ways, because it helps people learn, okay? And then this one down here, we had thirty one point three. So basically, what you can do is you can just count the decimal places like this. One, two, if you want to put a little two over here, you can, and then one. So this two plus one, we know, we have to move the decimal place three places to the left in our answer. One, two, three, giving us eight hundred and fifty five point four four five. Go to our answer key. Uh-oh, 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 uh-oh. Uh-oh. We look like we forgot to carry the one somewhere. This is exactly what I, I knew it. Alright, so where did I make a mistake? Let's see, right? So what did I get? Eight fifty five? Let's see, five plus zero, that's five. On this one, it's fourteen. Four, we carried the one. We got three. Uh, nine plus five is fourteen again. Man, y'all were supposed to let me know where I made a mistake, man. Nine and nine, that's eighteen. Um, okay, gotcha. No, eighteen, that's right. Plus seven, fifteen. Man, y'all were supposed to let me know where did I make a mistake? Now I have to chase down this mistake. Alright, you said it's supposed to be eight sixty five? Eight sixty five? Oh my goodness gracious, what happened here? Fifteen? Boom, boom, boom. Oh, I got it. I got my mistake. Here's my mistake right here. I carried the one. If we go to the column before, we had one plus eight, that's nine. Plus seven is sixteen. Plus nine is twenty five instead of fifteen. Ah, we hunted down this little deceitful snake right here, alright? This little deceitful little one right here. Uh-huh, so this is supposed to be a two, meaning that two plus two plus two is actually supposed to be, this is supposed to be a six. Meaning that our answer over here is supposed to be eight six five. Boom, woo! Eight six five point four four five. Now let's go to our answer key. Are we confident now? Look at this, A, right here. Eight six five point four four five. Man, we hunted it down. We hunted it down. Look, I make mistakes too, I'm trying to tell you. I make mistakes too, alright? Forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, but fantastic job keeping me on track. So that's what we have for today's study session, alright? I know it was kind of a lot. We dealt with a bunch of different things like fractions, specifically dividing by fractions, multiplying by fractions. We got to throw in some decimals in here. Um, learning PEMDAS, going over some PEMDAS review and everything like that. So there was a lot of, um, information in today's study session. I hope that it was beneficial to you. If you're taking the ASVAB sometime soon, make sure that you take your time. Don't rush it. Don't rush it, don't rush it. And if there's a section for you to put as much emphasis in, it's the math knowledge and the arithmetic reasoning session, section, okay? After that, make sure you do your best in the word knowledge and paragraph comprehension sections to help boost your score as much as possible, and then of course, the general sciences as well, okay? Um, but take your time, don't rush it. Everything is important. It's very important. So if you're joining the Marine Corps, I wish you the best. Make sure that you come back and let us know how you did on your ASVAB. You said it's on Thursday. That's right around the corner. I'm excited for you, so come back and let us know how you do. And to the rest of you all who are watching this either in the lives, uh, session or the YouTube replay, uh, feature, I just want to say y'all have a blessed one. I wish you the best as well. Always remember that success is made by actions. Lord, thank you for allowing us to have a study se- session together once again. May you help them pass the ASVAB as they go and pursue joining the military regardless of what branch. So I just want to say thank y'all for joining. Y'all make sure that you stay blessed. Always remember that success is made by actions, so get up, go grind. I'll see you next time.